Good evening. This is the December 6, 2023, meeting of the Planning Board. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board. The first matter for tonight is zone change petition number 2023-02 Beechwood Smithtown LLC. The property is located at the northwest corner of Old Northport Road and Lawrence Road in Kings Park. The request is a zone change from R-21, that's single-family half-acre, to R-6, townhouse development. We've prepared a report for the Board to consider. The reason for the Port, the Planning Board will conduct a public hearing tonight to consider the purpose of making a recommendation to the Town Board. Zone change petition 2023-02 Beechwood Smithtown LLC to change the zone of 93 tax parcels totaling 71.11 acres in size from R-21 to R-6. The site is located in the hamlet of Kings Park. It consists of 93 tax parcels owned by three separate owners and divided into three distinct areas: Raleigh Farm, KPE2, and a grouping of contiguous small parcels jointly referred to as the Correa Properties. The Raleigh Farm area consists of a single-family residence, poultry farm, and country store. The KPE2 area was formerly sandmined and contained a pre-cast concrete product business. The Correa properties have never been disturbed and contain approximately 22 acres of mature woods. The overall property has road frontage on Lawrence Road, Old Northport Road, Old Road, Linden Avenue, and Old Indian Head Road. The property also contains or is adjacent to unimproved paper streets filed in Section A of the Six Map of the Tract of Land AC Home Company of Kings Park as Kings Park Road, Harvard Avenue, Cornell Avenue, Yale Avenue, Princeton Avenue, and Barnard Avenue. The majority of the site is vacant woodland. There are significant grade changes throughout the site. Some of the slopes are natural and some of, some the result of the former sand mining. Approximately six acres are environmentally sensitive. That's slopes in excess of 15%. The site is split between the Smithtown and Kings Park School and Fire Districts. The site does not contain wetland or any high groundwater properties. The environmental assessment form indicates the subject property is identified as a habitat range for one or more documented northern long-eared bats which are classified by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and New York State Department of Environmental Conservation as an endangered species. The zoning surrounding the property is primarily R-21 to the north, the south, and to the east it's R-21, R-43, and LI, Light Industrial, and to the west you have R-21 and LI. The zoning history, majority of the site has been zoned single-family residential since the inception of zoning. In 2019, the Town Board approved the petition to rezone 20.9 acres of the area known as KPE2 from LI to R-21. The applicant has petitioned the Town Board to change the zoning of the entire 71.11-acre site from R-21 to R-6 in order to construct a 391-unit luxury condominium complex with an accessory clubhouse, recreational amenities, and an onsite sewage treatment system. 10% of the units are proposed to be marketed as affordable pursuant to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act and the town's workforce housing policy. The proposed total gross floor area of the buildings is 30% of the site or 930,877 square feet. Proposed access to the development is from Old Northport Road as well as a gated emergency access to Old Indian Head Road where the entrance to the poultry farm exists. A total of 1,302 parking stalls are being provided, including 40 ADA accessible stalls and an additional 262 spaces shown to be landbanked. Stormwater runoff is to be collected by catch basins and directed to the onsite recharge basin. All wastewater will be directed to an onsite sewage treatment plant. According to the AEF, the proposed development will generate approximately 117,330 gallons per day of sanitary wastewater. The environmental assessment form indicates that 52.66 acres will be developed and 18.5 acres will remain undeveloped. The petitioner also proposes to abandon several paper streets within the area of the development. The site plan submitted with the petition is conceptual. In the event this zone change petition is approved, details relating to access, site design, grading, drainage, architecture, landscaping, erosion control, and limits of clearing will be reviewed during the subdivision and Board of Site Plan Review Phases. Furthermore, any variances involving density or environmentally sensitive land would be subject to approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The number of units is also conceptual and could be changed during the zone change and subdivision review process. Some planning considerations: In 2019, the town of Smithtown began the process of updating the town's comprehensive plan. Although the update is in draft form and has not yet been adopted by the Town Board, it nevertheless is a product of the comprehensive analysis of the town's needs, constraints, and trends. The Planning Department has used prior draft updates to the comprehensive plan as a guide for reviewing past zone change petitions. The June 2, 2021 amendment to the 2020 draft comprehensive plan update recommends Raleigh Farm and adjoining properties on the west side of Kings Park Road, which is a paper street, should remain zoned R-21. However, given the site's relative proximity to downtown Kings Park, the town may consider allowing multifamily development at this location if it would provide a public benefit and would not create significant adverse environmental impacts as determined through a project-specific environmental impact statement. On the east side of Kings Park Road, the paper street, which primarily runs through the middle of the project, excuse me, the 2020 draft plan update recommends medium-density residential development that is clustered to preserve the mature woods located adjacent to the preserved county and DEC open space parcels. Lastly, the plan recommends that this area be developed as a single contiguous development. The proposed development is a SECRE type 1 action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act regulations. SECRE type 1 actions are identified as those actions which are more likely to require the preparation and review of an environmental impact statement and must be subjected to coordinated review among all involved agencies. Following preliminary coordination among the involved agencies and pursuant to Smithtown Town Code, Chapter 151, the Smithtown Town Board has been designated as the lead agency for the SECRE review of this action. The Department of Environment and Waterways has identified several potentially significant adverse environmental impacts associated with the subject development proposal, any one of which will necessitate the issuance of a SECRE positive declaration and the preparation of an environmental impact statement in this matter, and will finalize its recommendation to the Town Board following its review and consideration of all public comments received at the December 6, 2023 Planning Board hearing. Referral to Suffolk County Planning Commission. In accordance with Section 239m of New York State General Municipal Law, the town is required to refer this zone change petition to Suffolk County Planning Commission because the subject property is within 500 feet of an existing county road. The petition has not yet been referred to Suffolk County Planning Commission as the town and Planning Commission agree that the materials submitted to date do not represent the requisite full statement of the proposed action. The town and Suffolk County Planning Commission have agreed that the petition will be referred once the SECRE review is complete. The recommendation from the Planning Department is the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank-2023: Recommendation for Change of Zone Petition 2023-02 Beechwood Smithtown LLC, Request R-21 to R-6. Whereas the Planning Board has considered Zone Change Petition 2023-02 Beechwood Smithtown for a change of zone from R-21 to R-6 and has found that, number one, the Department of Environment and Waterways has identified several potentially significant adverse environmental impacts associated with the subject development proposal, any one of which will necessitate the issuance of a SECRE positive declaration and the preparation of an environmental impact statement in this matter. Now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby recommends the Town Board issue a SECRE positive declaration, determination of significance that an environmental impact statement is required, and that scoping of the EIS be conducted in accordance with 6 New York CRR Section 617.8 in the matter of Zone Change Petition 2023-02 Beechwood Smithtown LLC in accordance with the recommendation of the Department of Environment and Waterways. Second resolved, that the Planning Board hereby reserves its recommendation on the merits of the zoning, the rezoning petition until such time as the SECRE review has been completed and the Town Board has accepted a final environmental impact statement.
Thank you, Mr. Hans. Mr. Pizzuli?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Before I begin, I just, I prepared a statement. I'm going to hand up copies for the Board in case you want to follow along.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Board. My name is Vincent Pizzuli with offices located at 200 Robbins Lane in Jericho. I represent Beechwood Smithtown LLC, which I will here and after refer to as Beechwood. Before I begin, I'd like to hand up the required affidavits of mailing the proposal.
Thank you.
Also, before I begin, I did bring with me, I did bring with me several boards depicting the site plan as well as an artist's rendering of the proposed townhouses and also an aerial photo, which is behind that board, of the entire property so people could visualize it. As Mr. Hans reported, Beechwood has submitted an application to change the zoning classification of approximately 72 acres of land from R-21 to R-6 for the purposes of developing a townhouse condominium community. The property is an assemblage of three parcels known as the KPE property, Raleigh Farm, and the Correa property, and is generally located along the north side of Old Northport Road and Old Road, east of Old Indian Head Road and Linden Avenue, and west of Lawrence Road. The assemblage does not include the property along Lawrence Road that is currently undergoing remediation pursuant to a New York State DEC consent order. Beechwood is currently proposing a gated community of 391 units, which is less than what the R-6 zoning classification would normally permit, which is six units per acre. The yield will be less than six units per acre because of the exclusion of approximately, I have seven acres, Pete, of environmentally sensitive land. The proposed conceptual plan shows a mix of 105 three-bedroom townhouses and 286 two-bedroom units. All of the proposed units will be owner-occupied condominiums. No rentals are proposed. I want to make that clear to everybody. There are no rental apartments being proposed. Beechwood is also proposing to construct a gatehouse, clubhouse, and recreational amenities, and a state-of-the-art sewage treatment plan, plant, which would be located on the corner property adjacent to the Winter Brothers Construction and Demolition Debris Facility on Lawrence Road. I should add at this point that we received a telephone call from Winter's Brothers. We explained the project to them. They have announced their support for our project, and they submitted a letter to the Planning Department today to demonstrate their support. The conceptual site plan also shows a primary access drive to Old Northport Road and an emergency access driveway to Old Indian Head Road on the northwest corner of the property. Beechwood will be preparing a comprehensive traffic study of the proposed new community and the surrounding area, which will be included in a draft environmental impact statement, commonly referred to as a DEIS. Our environmental consultant, Teresa Alkowitz, is here with me this evening, and we will be making a record of everyone's comments and questions for the purposes of including them in a draft scoping statement for the DEIS. For that reason, I would now like to take this opportunity to speak about the change of zone and DEIS process and then yield to anyone who wishes to be heard. Pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, commonly known as SECRE, the proposed change of zone application is considered a type 1 action because it exceeds certain thresholds that presumptively trigger the requirement for a DEIS. Because the town has an established change of zone application process, the SECRE process will be coordinated with the change of zone process so that everyone will have a chance to participate either by written comments or live testimony at public hearings or both. As required by SECRE, the Town Board has commenced a coordinated review with all involved agencies, such as the New York State DEC, Suffolk County Department of Health Services, and the Suffolk County Department of Public Works, and has declared itself to be the lead agency under SECRE. The first step in the change of zone process is to make a determination of environmental significance typically referred to as a negative declaration or a positive declaration. A positive declaration means that a proposed action may have the potential for significant environmental, environmental impacts, and we fully expect the Town Board to issue a positive declaration and conduct a thorough review. As we understand the town's application process, the purpose of tonight's Planning Board meeting is to make a recommendation to the Town Board as to whether a positive declaration would be appropriate. Based upon the classification of the change of zone application as a type 1 action, we are expecting the Planning Board to recommend that the Town Board issue a positive declaration, which will trigger the requirement for preparing the DEIS. Pursuant to the Town Code, the Planning Board is also required to make a recommendation on the merits of the change of zone application, and that should occur after the Town Board has accepted the DEIS as complete for public review and comment. Since the DEIS has not yet been scoped and prepared, we don't yet have all of the information needed to specifically address every question about potential environmental impacts. In order to complete the application record, we expect the Planning Board to adjourn and continue the hearing after the DEIS is accepted as complete by the Town Board, which we would expect to occur sometime next year. The Town Board will also schedule a separate public hearing to consider the DEIS and the change of zone application after the Planning Board makes its recommendation to the Town Board. As such, tonight's hearing will be the first of several hearings that will be scheduled to consider this change of zone application. Finally, in view of the process ahead of us, it is worth repeating that tonight's meeting is a great opportunity to listen and gather everyone's comments for inclusion in our draft scoping statement, which will serve as an outline for our DEIS. So even though this hearing must, may be adjourned and continued, it should be a useful beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuli.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this matter? And I'm going to ask you to please step up to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
Lynn O'Keefe, Two Mountain Laurel Lane, Kings Park. O-K, I'm sorry. O-K-E-E-F-E. In hearing all this and speaking with the developers earlier, there's no environmental impact study, so, but I'm so interested to see what that's going to show, but more than anything, traffic. And we have a very small town. Kings Park is a very small town, and we're getting one of the biggest projects on Long Island. That is, we're not getting it, or it's in the works. I just feel like traffic is going to be, it's a problem now, so I cannot even imagine what the traffic is going to be after this. The schools, because it's not going to be 55 and over, that's going to be an issue. Fire department, hospitals, really, the big concern is that Indian Head Road, the traffic is horrendous. And I just can't imagine having all this traffic, all these extra, you're talking about 390 townhomes, 390 residences, and I was just like overhearing, yeah, you can sell them, but maybe, what's going to stop people from renting them? I know that, you know, everyone's nervous about change. I think this is, this is tremendous for our small town, and I don't think, I hope that you guys are really going to look into this, the traffic study, because we've had so many terrible accidents on Indian Head Road. And Kings Park has very little access in and out of our town. We don't have major roads in and out of our, we have Indian Head Road, 25A, and Poloski. And I just really feel like this is too big for our town. And thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? Again, please step up to the mic and state your name and address for the record, and can you please kindly spell your name for the videographer?
Okay. My name is Rose Marie Ditta, D-I-T-T-A. I live at 22 Linden Avenue. My son, John Ditta, owns the house, and I live with my son. The concern is, surveyors have been on the block that I've seen, and the way it looks, a road is going to come out and face my son's house. It's a very narrow road. The only people that come up and down Linden Avenue either live there or deliveries. The road, you know, two lanes of road, it's not possible. Will a road come through Linden Avenue from this project?
Well, I just want you to be aware and all the other members of the audience that all these questions that you have and everybody else has will be addressed by the attorney for the applicant, and that'll be done after everyone speaks tonight. So if you have a question, they are making notes of that, and they will address that later.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
And also, Linden Avenue, Old Road, Old Indian Head Road, again, these are narrow roads that when you go down the road, especially Old Road, lot of homes there, when they have their parties, there's cars parked up and down, two cars can't go through. So you have to allow for somebody to go through. With a project like this, you're talking an added 300 and something cars, or if it's a family with teenagers, extra cars. Our roads can't handle that. I've been on Old Indian Head Road, and that's where the sports complex is, and whatever was going on, parents were picking their kids up, I was backed up. I couldn't go through. They had somebody directing traffic to let you through unless you were going into the complex. All this added traffic will be a horror for our area. And my concern is the schools. Biggest part of your tax money here is the schools. With such a big project, and there's going to be families with childrens, can the schools accommodate these children? Or are they going to have to add to these schools? So they're going to add to property taxes. And also, getting back to where I live, on Indian, on Linden Avenue, what is a project like this going to affect my son's home value? He's added a lot to his home. Is this project going to take away from the value of the single-family homes on this street? I mean, this is the biggest part of their, you know, property. I think that covers it. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. And please step up to the mic. Again, state your name and address and spell your name, please.
Good evening. Bridgette Antignolo, A-N-T-I-G-N-O-L-O. It's a beautiful, it looks beautiful, the project, but it doesn't belong on Long Island. Suffolk County. Where is the quality of life for my hamlet? All I'm saying is, I grew up here, I'm third generation, and I'm sure, you know, a lot of you are, and it's going to change the face of our world, and we're having enough changes, so no to Beechwood. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Joe Reed, R-E-I-D. I live on 26 Linden Avenue in Kings Park. Been a resident of Kings Park for over 32 years. I've been involved with the community with prior services of fireman and EMT and a scoutmaster of a local Boy Scout troop. I lived on Linden Avenue for almost 18 years, and there's concerns I have for this project. First and foremost is a safety concern with the traffic issues. Now, what I saw tonight is a little different reflective of what I have seen with some plans in the past. I spoke to the surveyors that were in the woods across the street from my home. They showed me plans where there was an entrance on Linden Avenue feeding into this development. As the prior person spoke about, Linden Avenue is a very small street. It's got a massively steep hill at the end of the block where I have personally had cars stuck trying to get up that hill, trying to add 391 residents with over two cars per family on average on Long Island. You're talking about 800 cars in this local community where Linden Avenue can't handle it, Old Road can't handle it, Old Northport Road can't handle it. The traffic is going to be a massive problem. Sorry. In addition to that, well, currently there's only 13 houses on Linden Avenue, and trying to take this small little road and feed into, now I understand the plans have changed since I've seen them last, but they're not finalized yet either, so you still may change the plans and add this entrance, which I would strongly contend against because I think it's very irresponsible, irresponsible if you do. The environmental impact is very concerning to me. I understand you haven't done the study yet, but I do want to bring that up. I do care about preserving and saving the wildlife on Long Island. I think it's critical. The wildlife at risk, oops, sorry, I'm losing my place here. The wildlife at risk includes whitetail deer, includes turkey, it includes several species of bats, including an endangered species. It includes the great-horned owl as well, as well as other species, as well as other species of owls, rabbits, squirrels, chipmunks, raccoons, various hawks, various birds, turtles, snakes, lizards, frogs, and lots of important insects to our environment. All of these I've seen firsthand in the, in the woods. I'd like to specifically address the turkeys. The turkeys, keep losing my spot, sorry. The turkeys have a deep heritage in our country and were almost our national symbol. Ben Franklin argued for the turkey to be our national symbol, but the Continental Congress at the time ultimately adopted the bald eagle as our country's national symbol. Historically, wild turkeys have been abundant throughout the country, including much of the northeastern United States. However, in the 19th century, factors such as habit, habitat, such as construction and habitat deconstruction caused problems with the turkey population. The wild turkey population on Long Island and in many parts of the country have become extremely scarce. Some populations disappearing entirely from the regions. Conservation efforts were initiated to restore and reintroduce the wild turkeys to their native habitats. On Long Island, conservation programs played a critical role in the return of the wild turkeys. People that live in that neighborhood see the turkeys all the time now. Over the last three years or so, we've seen them visibly in our community. And I particularly like to see this kind of wildlife in the community and in the woods over there. The prior efforts aimed to reestablish viable populations and contribute to the overall conservation of species has been successful. The presence of wild turkeys is a testament to the effectiveness of those conservation efforts. I'd hate to see us go back to the 1950s where we start seeing a downgrade and populations of species starting to disappear again. Once again, I believe this development is reckless and irresponsible. My bigger concern is associated with the safety and the traffic issues. But the environmental issues really needs to be a strong consideration as well. I implore you to please not approve this development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Elizabeth Mathie, M-A-F-E-S-N-Frank-E. I live at 16 Old Road. And I'm here to say that this is the most disgraceful, disgusting thing I have ever seen in my life. We live on Long Island. We all came here because we wanted more space, more land. We didn't want to live in New York City or the Five Boroughs because of the traffic, the smog, the traffic. This is ridiculous. We pay high tax dollars to live on Long Island. And it's about time the damn town board started listening to its residents. They conduct our lives. They are ruining our lives. My parents came here almost 75 years ago. We lived on Landing Avenue on a stinking dirt road. Now, I can't even tell you the devastation of land, woodland lands, all our wildlife. And what happens to this? People call the town and say, oh, my God, we have deer on our property, we have raccoons, we have opossums. Hello, people, you've taken all their land, their entire environment. Where would you like them to go? So you know what we do? We call the DEC. And we have more bow and arrow hunters coming. They invade our property, our privacy. They don't care whether they're in the unique land or not. They come and do what they want. And we're told there's nothing we can do. Nothing we can do. Where are our town rights? This is outrageous. This building, or any building for that matter, on that land is not needed. We do not need more people and more apartment complexes or condos, or whatever it is you want to call this. Kings Park is not growing in size. But however, no matter how many condos and apartments you build and how high you build them, where would you like to stick these people? We are not going to be sardines in a can. That's not what Long Island is. That's not what we all pay for. This is a travesty. And if you put this through, how many of these complexes are going to be here in walking distance from my house, 16 Old Road? We got two of them across the street from, oh, my God, I can't even think of the name of the road. Somebody help me here. Indian Head Road, thank you. From Indian Head Road. Now, you want to put this atrocity? This does not belong on Long Island. It is not. We are a small community of people who enjoy our privacy, our wildlife, our half-acre homes. This is outrageous. And now, I found out that not only is this isn't bad enough, there's another meeting tomorrow night. Oh, guess what? More apartments. They want to build more apartments by Rite Aid and TJ Maxx. When is enough enough? You cannot bring back species that have been extinct. And if you think it's not happening, you're wrong. Animals were put here on this earth for a reason. Those deer eat grass and bushes. And what they poop out revitalizes our land. Opossums, turkeys, they are our best friends. They eat an inordinate amount of ticks and bugs an entire season. They eat vermin, they eat rodents. The owls take care of the rodents. Everything has a function. I don't know who these people think they are that they can change nature, okay? It's ridiculous. I personally don't want to be living around all kinds of buildings, apartment complexes. I live on Long Island. Where's the land? It's nowhere. We keep taking it. Why? Who has that right? We haven't been given any compensation. I don't know about any of you, but I believe we all moved to our homes for a reason. We liked the area. We liked where we were living. It's for a reason. Who are these people to come in and ruin our community? Countless lives? It's ridiculous. They are not needed and/or wanted, okay? We have enough people. There needs to be a point of stopping. And apparently, this township doesn't really see that. Second, I don't care what any survey shows me, I do not believe that anybody can stand here and tell me 100% that there is no more toxins in that area, that there is no more toxic waste. Again, who is the town board to make, gamble with residents and communities' lives? This is ridiculous. And I'm sure we've all seen the Camp Lejeune commercials. What do you think is going to happen to this in a couple of years? The same thing. Ah, sorry, too late. Now, we'll pay you. Well, you know what? Sorry doesn't cut it. For something that is not needed or wanted, it is too high a risk for people to pay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do anyone else who would like to comment?
Mike Rosato, 12 Country Oaks, Kings Park. Sure, it's R-O-S-A-T-O. I'm president of the Kings Park Civic, Kings Park Community Association, excuse me. I want to thank the planning board for recommending an environmental impact statement. I think that is certainly needed in this case, so much appreciated. Also, I want to make it clear for the record that the Kings Park Community Association recommends that the zoning not be changed on this property from half acre to R6. What I find somewhat perplexing is why the town would recommend medium zoning on the parcel to the east that's currently being cleaned up, and R6 on these parcels which are adjacent to open space and woodlands. So if the objective was to keep the parcel to the east from competing with the open space parcels to the north and to the west, why would this parcel not do the same? Being that it's completely adjacent to those open space parcels. Now, I know the planning department is aware that the county has tried repeatedly to buy both the Coria property and the Raleigh Farm property, and have made offers on numerous occasions. Those offers were denied because of the offer that was made by Beechwood, which far exceeds what the county is offering. But it's important, certainly for the people in this room, for the character of Kings Park, that the town do all that it possibly can to preserve those open space parcels, especially the Coria property, which borders the State DEC Preserve. That's approximately 69 acres. It also borders county property that was preserved years ago, which included three separate parcels, which added another 16 acres adjacent to that preserve. The Coria property and the Raleigh Farm property borders that preserve. So everything should be done to try to protect those parcels. If the town were to even consider changing the zoning on these parcels, then it should be as a trade-off of preserving the 25 acres that Mr. Coria owns and the 16 acres that Raleigh Farm owns. Other than that, there should be no reason to change the zoning. The character of the area should be maintained and not changed. The only other thing, just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. The future, I think what also needs to be considered when looking at this proposal is what's going to happen to the property to the east. There's another 40 acres plus that is being cleaned up right now for good reason. That certainly will be a benefit to the community. But what are they going to propose? And in conjunction with what's being proposed here, we could be looking at close to 400 or 500 units of housing in that area, which would be certainly not welcome by the people that live close to this area and certainly by this association. So I asked the town, the planning department in particular, when deciding the fate of this proposal, that they also take into consideration what's going to be proposed right next door. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Arlene Caporaso, C-A-P-O-R-A-S-O, 18 Linden Avenue. And my concerns are what everyone else said here. The traffic will be just really devastating to all of us because of the quantity of the units. And we all did move to Long Island to get away from Queens, get away from, you know, New York City. And Town of Smithtown always had that years ago. And I used to always stand up and fight, not in my town, they clean the roads, not in my town, Town of Smithtown, you could see the borderline from Brookhaven and Town of Smithtown and Town of, but it's not that anymore. It's, I don't know what happened. And I don't want to bring up Vecchio, but it seems like since he passed, it's, everything is changing around us. My other biggest concern, besides the wildlife, I agree with Liz, is terrible. And that's why I like living here, I like to see all the animals around, is the environmental and the health hazards. Once that property is overturned, you look at all the condos that have been built on farmlands on Long Island, like Davis Peach Farm, they have the highest cases of cancer. Look statistically at any developments of homes that were built on farms and areas. That has been a toxic waste for 40 years, okay? And again, as I said, I understand when you went for zoning for private housing. But now, you're building all these condos in the middle of a residential area. It doesn't make any sense. Indian Head Road is one thing, that's not so residential. We have the ice rink there. We have Plycon, who's a wonderful, since he took over there. But you're putting all these condos in the middle of a residential area where everybody pays very high taxes around that area. And it doesn't, it just, it's not logical. And it's not really fair to all of us that came here and moved here. Again, it's really a travesty what we're doing to us, around us. Again, just to look at that and the health issues, I'm really, really concerned about the health issues once you start disturbing that property. And Camp Lejeune is a good example of that. Because that was toxic waste 45 years ago. They have, if you look at the records, if you all have been here a long time, 40 years ago, they closed them down. Then a few years ago, all the residents in the area, we were smelling things going on, and they were dumping toxic waste too, 10 years ago? So again, it's a lot of factors. It's not only is the traffic, it's the health. And Kings Park is Kings Park, and it stayed so nice, it's not going to be like that anymore. You know? So thank you for listening to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, you had a comment?
Matthew Blake. I live on Old Indian Head Road in Kings Park. B-L-A-K-E, Blake. So my wife and I stay pretty much to ourselves. So this is really the first time we're actually seeing the plans. I can agree with everybody about the wildlife. I mean, I'm chasing turkeys out of my yard every day. They eat everything in sight, it's amazing. The bats, the deer, they're all over the place. We moved from East Northport on a small 1/5 acre piece of land. We bought an acre and a third in Kings Park, we love it. We're trying to figure out how we can stay here in retirement because the taxes are just so high. But we want to stay, we love it there. I can tell you, just by the half an hour that I've been here, there is no way you can address the traffic. No way. My wife and I have video of in front of our house on Old Indian Head Road, when the camp gets out, half hour to an hour, backed up like a parking lot. We can't get out of our driveway, we can't get in our driveway, nobody can get down the road. They have people directing traffic in and out of the Sports Time Arena. You just can't do it. So unless you start blocking traffic and redirecting everybody off that road, there's no way that you can address the traffic of putting all of these units in there. Even if it was single-family homes, and it went down to 200 or 300, you just can't do it. You'd have to start redirecting traffic everywhere. So, I mean, if you come up with a plan to do that, maybe, but if you can't, there's no way. You can't do it. It's not going to work. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. We will get to everybody tonight.
We got a gentleman behind you coming up.
And we will get to everybody.
We'll get to everybody.
My name is Jim Rao, I'm at 2 Old Road, R-A-O.
Please spell your last name for this.
R-A-O. So to echo what everyone else has said, but an example with the traffic. I'm the first house coming off of Old Northport Road onto Old Road. As everyone said, the roads are very narrow. The first stop sign is actually past my house. And actually, ironically, it's a school bus stop. That stop sign, people coming off of Old Northport Road, they are flying. And my kids, I have older kids, they're not allowed on the street. A friend of mine died when he was small, playing in the street. They come off that road, and they're flying. And on a good day, 50% of the time, people decide to stop at that stop sign. And that stop sign is a school bus stop. I've seen 7:30 in the morning, people literally fly right, almost fly right through, with kids. And I grew up in Levittown, we had sidewalks. With no sidewalks, the kids are like hugging the curb, and so are the cars. It's, I swear to God, I hate, every day seeing something happen there. So the point people saying about the traffic, that road, as now as it is, assuming I was a little late, the entrance on Linden Avenue, besides just the over, you know, population of cars and whatnot coming through there, already it's a major hazard. And the other point I want to make with the traffic, coming off Old Northport Road, it kind of curves the road a bit onto Old Road, is a major blind spot. So the real major problem is coming off Old Northport Road. But I've been there 19 years. On the other end, in 2009, I had a car coming the other end of Old Road. And the person was speeding, and there was a little bit of ice out. And they came, and their car literally drove right through my fence into the front yard. They got no kids yet, drove through my front yard and stopped by colliding head-on into a tree. And that was the safer area on Old Road coming down, okay? It's horrific. I mean, I had to get that. I mean, I had to get that example, because that's the safer area coming down. And then as far as the toxins, I mean, people said earlier, I've been there 19 years, it was like 10 years ago, the letters went around, "What's that smell?" You couldn't open your windows. You had to leave your windows shut. You couldn't, I mean, like everybody said, we moved here for a reason, you know, get away from, you know, this overpopulation and whatnot. And, you know, it's the summertime, you can't have your windows open because of the smell. And not just because it's annoying, but God knows what's in it. So, you know, to have a big project like this, you know, right in the middle of a residential area, it's not what we came here for. And really, it's not just an opinion of, "Oh, I wouldn't want that." I prefer the woodland, of course, but it's just a major, major, you know, traffic, you know, hazard. So, you know, and I don't know if having the other entrance, again, I was late, if the other one's proposed to be on Old Northport, but I mean, God knows what kind of accidents are there, people just flying up and down Old Northport, unless you put lights there or whatever, but still. But coming off on those side roads, every road you're talking about is extremely narrow. And once you put one car in the street there, like people said, you can't drive through two at a time. So, already it's an issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak, sir?
My name is Rocco Caporaso, C.A.P.O.R.A.S.O., Senior. I live at 18 Linden Avenue in Kings Park. And it's true, I know just about all my neighbors in this room, and they're right. Traffic, birds, and deer, and it's, everything is true, what they're saying, okay? But there's one important thing, okay? There's two people who are going to prosper by this. One is the builder, who's going to sell these things and make millions of dollars. The other is a town going to make millions of dollars off the taxes, okay? But the people in this room are going to be screwed, in plain English, because our taxes are going to fly through the roof. New schools, taxes on sanitation, this, that, the other. All these kids, where are they going to go? More teachers, schools, and everything. So, it's really not going to work where they want to put... I mean, it seems like a nice place. I mean, they should keep the plans, maybe put it upstate or something where there's plenty of land, but it's not going to work in our community. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard, sir? Again, your name, address, and spell your last name, please. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Michael Ketell, K.E.T.T.E.L.L. I live at 20 Linden Avenue in Kings Park. And I just, I actually spent the time yesterday to go to the planning department and look at the application, and I had a few questions on it. So I was hoping that maybe I can address, or I can express them and get some answers on it. You know, a couple of the things that I really noticed, you know, just were, you know, a change in wooded acre, wooded acres down of about 69%. Increase in buildings of about 3,035%, and an increase in paved roads of about 7,000, 1,792% in acreage. I think that's really substantial improvement and burden to put on an area that is zoned residentially, single-family right now. And I don't agree with the rezoning to a multifamily purpose. When I purchased my home, I grew up in Kings Park. I was born here. I graduated from Kings Park High School. I am a member of the audit committee for the Kings Park School District now. I'm involved in the community, you know, and I really don't believe that this is in line with the character of the community, or, you know, when I purchased my home. I did my research. I know that it was wooded area across the, across the street from me, but when I looked it up, it was zoned, single-family residential. So when I purchased my home, I really thought the worst that could happen would be single families living across the street from me. Same, you know, people just like me and my husband, people just like me and my neighbors living across the street. Not a 391-town home development put in place. I think that is really ridiculous. You know, there were, there are a couple of things in the application that I just had questions on. You know, there was noted in the application that herbicides will be used on the property. When I looked at the Suffolk County GIS map, there are two property tax lots just immediately north of the property that are zoned for water supply. So I'm curious how that really reconciles with itself. I don't really know why would we, we would be putting a 391-unit complex with, you know, that's going to be using pesticides and herbicides and things like that for their maintenance, you know, so close to both a New York State Environmental Conservation Area and a water reclamation area. I think that's really not, not appropriate. You know, I, again, reading the application, a lot of every, a lot of it was to be determined. I would like to know when the site plan, you know, and everything is going to be, the site plan grading, all that is going to be documented and provided to us. You know, it's kind of, you know, we're in the process now, and I feel like we should, you know, have answers for that. In the application, one of the questions that was asked was, "Is the proposed project consistent with neighboring uses?" And they answered, "Yes. There's a mix of land uses nearby, including multifamily residential opposite the side of the west side, opposite the site on the west side of Indian Head Road, as well as single-family homes in the area." Well, according to these plans, really, that, that site that's opposite Indian Head Road is going to be opposite the emergency access to this, this development, so it's not really necessarily neighboring to the, the entrance to development. It's not going to be on the same traffic pattern or anything like that. So I really just wanted to go on record and express my concerns. You know, I agree with all of my neighbors here, really, and kind of reiterate their same concerns over safety, traffic, the environmental impact, but generally, I really am concerned over the preservation of the character of our community and my home value. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? Yes, sir.
My name is Christopher Shannon, S.H.A.N.N.O.N. I live on 1 Melody Lane, about a half a mile from the proposed build site. And I'd just like to thank all of my neighbors for coming out today and expressing what we all moved out to Long Island for. And for people who lived out here, I can really appreciate how much things have changed and how difficult that must be. But my, really, I have questions. Why, why is this good for the town? And particularly, why is it good for the people in this room? And I think that's really a question that the board has to ask, or maybe the builder. But the builder's not just asking to come in and build on, on this property. As a matter of fact, he's, they've inflated the hell out of the property so that the property owners right now won't even sell it for the, for the property's value, because the property's already valued it for the R-21 zoning. So that's why their other offer, the offers from the town have been lower. Okay? It's not because, you know, Beechwoods come in and said, "You know what? They don't just want to build, they want to decimate the area." They want to put, what, 400 homes? I think that's like 6% of the housing already available in Kings Park. I'm not really sure, I haven't had much time to look at it. But that's a tremendous increase to the housing in Kings Park, and you're going to put it in the middle of the, we're zoned, what, R-21, correct? I mean, we all bought in that area, we knew what the zoning was, all right? And now, they want to do this so that they can make profit? I mean, it's ridiculous.
And then leave.
And then leave, or whatever else. The roads speak for themselves. You can't even, people, I don't know how many accidents are on Indian Head Road. You, I'm sure that you know, because, I mean, you're the town zoning board, right? It's the most dangerous road we have in the whole area, probably. So you're going to start pulling out, "Well, yeah, in the morning, when I get out, I'm going to compete with 400 households now to get out on the Indian Head Road." Yeah. That's, I mean, you can do it. Of course we can do it. Of course, we could build a six-lane highway out to Indian Head Road, and then, you know, connect that way. But I just want to thank everybody for coming down, and I have the question to the zoning board, it's the same question. What benefit is it to the Kings Park, and what benefit is it to the homeowners around that area? And if Beechwood wants to answer it, they can tell us to. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? Any more comments at all? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Winsome Cameron, C.A.M.E.R.O.N., and I live at 48 Mantac Path. Full disclosure, first of all, good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time. I live in Country Point at Kings Park, and I've been a resident in Kings Park for 20 years now. I purchased the home on my own, hard work, and the residents on Linden, you are, you, I can't say it, but you are the reason why I stay in Kings Park. I see you come out here, you're concerned about your homes. You're the sole reason. And by the way, we do have wild turkeys coming through our development, just so you know. I look forward to seeing them. Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me, forgive me. I don't do speaking, but forgive me. I want to stay in Kings Park. I have a couple more years to retire. Also, full disclosure, I'm a railroad conductor. I'll have 30 years. So I'm breaking what we would call generational curses. Okay? I'm proud to be a member of Kings Park. I'm proud to live here. If I wasn't, I would have moved. 20 years here, and I embrace the community, and the board, and the politicians, and everyone who have made it easier for me to be a resident. 20 years, I've paid taxes here. Sorry, but again, I understand the concerns. Beechwood will have to hear the concerns. We'll leave it to the board and the people who are the experts. I appreciate the fact that we will have an environmental study. Obviously, now we know that the town and the community wants a traffic study. These are our homes, but again, 20 years in the development by the builder. I haven't left yet. I don't want to leave. I want to stay here in Kings Park. I want my family to come and see where I live, and know that my neighbors who embraced me are the ones who I embrace. That I love this town, and I'm going to leave it in the hands of the board and the members, and also anyone who comes, builders, they're coming into our town. So they will do the right thing. They have to do the right thing. I'm just looking forward to questions also that will be answered. Down the road, again, it's the first night of everything, but it won't happen overnight, and I'm hoping that we'll all come to some sort of agreement. But I am for the development of this new townhouse development. I am for it. I do want to state that, put that on the record. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard at this time? Yes, sir. Ma'am? I'm sorry, in the back?
How are you? I'm Arlene Page, 12 Old Road, Kings Park, P.A.G.E. You're welcome. I just want to reiterate what they say, with the traffic is a big, big problem. Even already, it is. I'm right there, too, on the, on Old Road, right in the midst of everything, and it's tough. And with the kids, with the schooling and everything, it won't work right. It just, with the busing, everything, even the turning in and out, like they're saying with Sports Time, it is very, a lot of traffic. Even getting out onto Old Northport to go to Indian Head Road, all of that right there would be terrible with all the traffic. So I just wanted to make sure I had my piece of mind there. Thank you.
Is there another comment? I saw someone else's hand go up before, or is everyone has been heard? Okay, Mr. Pizzuli, would you like to answer some of the questions?
I, thank you. And I will endeavor to answer and clarify a couple of factual matters, but I think, as I stated in the beginning, and I think as the planning department memo acknowledged, a lot of good questions deserve answers. This is the first step. This is the introductory hearing. We don't have the benefit of all of the studies, but on that subject, everyone should know that as part of the environmental impact statement process, we are required, or will be required, to prepare a tax impact analysis, which concerns the school district and, and all other revenue-producing, and for all the other entities that require the taxes. We are also meeting with the fire departments to get their input on access and emergency response. There's a lot of things that need to be unpacked that we can't do tonight, because we don't have a record yet, and that's the whole point of being here tonight. But I do want to explain a couple of things. I've heard a couple of people mention that Linden Road, there's an access to Linden Road. There is no access proposed to Linden Road. I don't know where that unfortunate... I don't know where that unfortunate report came, but there is no proposed access to Linden Road. The only, I'm sorry, Linden Avenue. The only, you know, it's funny, I crossed out avenue and put road, I should have kept it the same. And by the way, I am from Kings Park, so, you know, I'm not an out-of-towner who's coming in. I'm sorry. I'm not an out-of-towner coming, coming here and not having any knowledge of the, of the community. I graduated Kings Park High School in 1974. I still have a lot of family and friends in the community. I do know how you feel, and I also know how my client feels, and I know how a lot of people feel. And we're going to get to, go through this process, and we're going to reach a conclusion. But let me go back to the access question. The only access that's proposed at this moment in time is a gated access to Old Northport Road and an emergency access-only driveway on the north side, northwest side of the property, where the existing driveway to Raleigh Farm is located. That driveway empties out onto Old Indian Head Road, and there's a traffic light, Country Point at Kings Park. The first Country Point at Kings Park is directly across the street. So all traffic from this future community, as the way the plan is currently proposed, is going to be entering and exiting from Old Northport Road, not Linden and not Old Indian Head Road. Okay? As been mentioned several times tonight, we will be performing a traffic study. We're not going to stand up here tonight and say that there are no impacts, but we don't believe that there are impacts that can't be mitigated. That will all be demonstrated and proven in the environmental impact statement. With regard to the comprehensive plan, I understand where we're at with the comprehensive plan, and the planning department is working on it. And I do believe it's an appropriate recommendation to consider multifamily zoning at this location for a variety of reasons, also going to be analyzed in the environmental impact statement. So I want to wrap up, because I can't answer all these questions without, without the data, okay? But what I can say to you is that it should be understood that the subject property is privately owned, it's clean, and it's suitable for development. The KPE portion of the subject property was the subject of a prior change of zone application to eliminate heavy industrial use and promote residential development, and it was remediated in connection with the town's approval of that application. And I have closure letters from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, which will be documented in the environmental impact statement. In furtherance of the town's goal to eliminate industrial uses and promote residential development in this area of Kings Park, Beechwood's proposal is the most responsible and desirable, by far. Beechwood is one of the most successful builders on Long Island, with a portfolio of over 7,500 homes. In Smithtown alone, Beechwood has successfully built and sold nearly 500 units in four townhouse developments, Country Point at Kings Park, Country Point Woods at Smithtown, Country Point at Smithtown, and Country Point at Smithtown North. Beechwood is no stranger to the Town of Smithtown. We've, they've been here for over 20 years, and they've, and obviously, there is a demand for their product, because Smithtown is currently enjoying the presence of four townhouse communities from Beechwood. In our view, and based upon housing studies that have been, several housing studies conducted over the last few years, Smithtown still needs a more diverse housing inventory to satisfy existing and future demand for this kind of housing, and this has been proven to be true in connection with the successful sales and build-out of the other projects. I also want to add that much of the necessary infrastructure will be installed in advance or concurrently with construction. This includes roadways, STP, and drainage systems, all of which will be analyzed and explained in DEIS. The DEIS will also demonstrate that all potential impacts will be mitigated to the fullest extent possible, and it will further demonstrate that as a whole, the proposed project will be environmentally superior. I know a lot of people may not take this, they're not going to take my word for it, they have to see in writing, but this will be environmentally superior to any traditional or clustered, single-family subdivision that could occur at this property. I just want to end on a somewhat of a personal note. Members of the Raleigh family are here with us this evening. Some of us have grown up with the Raleigh Farm, and the Raleigh family understands that some folks are disappointed that the farm will not continue if this application is approved. They are thankful for everyone's support and patronage, but after a lifetime of working at the farm, they have to move on, too, and they hope everyone will understand. And they hope everyone will understand. That's all I have this evening. That's really all I can, all I can say at this point in time until I have, until we develop traffic studies and other impact analyses. So thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzouli.
You can go up now.
Yep.
Name, address. Thank you.
So it's Matthew Blake. Matthew Blake. I'm on Old Indian Head Road. So just to address one thing about the traffic pattern that I forgot to mention earlier. Everybody that lives on Old Road and Old Indian Head Road knows that the path from Old Northport Road to Indian Head Road into Kings Park, everybody cuts through Old Road onto Old Indian Head Road to get into Kings Park. I mean, all day, every day. So I would just ask that if there is some type of a traffic study that, that... What's that?
There will be a traffic study.
I just want to make sure that that's taken into account because I can only imagine if the entrance to this place is on Old Northport Road, it's just going to increase. So I just want to make sure that that's taken into account.
Mr. Pizzouli?
I want to thank this gentleman for that comment because one of the things that will be analyzed in the traffic study is whether or not there should be two open access points. So that will, that will be evaluated. This is the conceptual site plan. This is the way it's been presented. But the traffic study will analyze the traffic patterns and the effects of having one access, one open access as opposed to two access points. So that will be studied. So thank you for your comment.
Okay, thank you. And sir, you had another comment?
Again, my name is Joe Reed, R-E-I-D, 26 Linden Avenue. I did want to, before he got up here, make the same statement. I have seen traffic on Old Northport Road. Anybody who is on Old Northport Road that wants to head north is heading down Old Road and onto Old Indian Head Road. The majority of traffic on Old Road is people cutting through off of Old Northport Road. So the statement that the gentleman made, Old Indian Head Road can handle the traffic. There's a lot of traffic that is going to be diverted onto Old Road, which is a very narrow road and can't handle it. I do want to bring up another thing that the gentleman mentioned as far as access to or from Linden Avenue. I brought that up because I spoke to surveyors several months ago who were in the woods across the street from my house. And the surveyors showed me at the time that there was access and single access from Linden Avenue, which was a dramatic concern for me, especially because that hill that I mentioned, which is a significant danger to traffic. This is not a finalized plan. He just came up here and said, "Maybe we'll add more access points. Maybe we'll do this traffic study and we'll see more access points." I'm still concerned about the Linden Avenue possible access point and the, the traffic. Currently, there's only 13 homes on that road. So most people are not aware of how difficult that hill is to get up on Linden Avenue in the ice and snow. Liz, who lives at the bottom of that hill, has helped us out numerous times when our cars can't get up that hill and allowed us to park in her driveway. So I did want to just reiterate in response to some of the, the comments that were made. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Liz Maffe, M-A-F-F-E. I live at 16 Old Road. And while I appreciate a traffic study being done, I think that almost every resident in this room can tell you firsthand, we see it every day. It goes right by our homes. My house, the back of my house is Old Northport Road. I cannot tell you the traffic that goes by there at any given time of the day. And they are speeding at, at top rates. They, they don't care. They just speed. The accesses to Old Road coming from, I guess, the west is a wicked left, left-hand turn that is dangerous in and of itself. Again, the lighting and the curve of that road is extremely dangerous. At 16 Old Road, when I try and back out of my driveway, I can't even see what's coming from that way. It, it is just not a feasible or, or safe way to, to have traffic. And again, 391 people, you're talking 800 cars at least. And again, Old Northport Road, the, the big intersection between everything is crazy. And again, I see it every night outside my kitchen window. I honestly don't need a survey to tell me what the traffic is like, like. I understand you need it to, to proceed forward, but you just can't deny what it is. It's, it's not safe. It just is not a safe, a safe road or a safe place to be putting a structure of this, of this size. It, it just is not. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, am I going to close it? I'm going to close it, right? Okay. Okay, then, in the matter of zone change petition 2023-02, Beechwood Smithtown LLC, a move that we close the hearing.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The hearing is closed. And in the matter of...
Is there any questions?
Oh, the board have any questions, sir?
I have none. I just had a couple of questions. No, no problem. With the brothers? I see that they had, you know, they sent the letter approving. Is that transfer facility going to stay on the site?
As of right now, it's proposed. It's going to remain.
It is going to, going to remain? And the original application was what zoning?
Which application of what?
For, for the residential homes.
R-21.
It was R-21?
Well, that's, the request right now is to go from R-21 to R-6.
Right.
However, the prior zone change portions were LI zone, the KPE 2.
Right.
Zone change went from LI to all R-21.
Okay. And this, this application obviously is for the SEQA as well as the approval for the zone change?
No, it's just a recommendation to the town board. The proposed resolution is to recommend the positive deck and that would be go back to the town board. That's what we're doing.
So today's only positive?
It's just, it's just a recommendation to the town board. There's nothing will be finalized at all.
There's no recommendation on the zoning. It's a recommendation to go forward with an environmental impact statement.
Okay, so we're not recommending the, the zone change, then?
No.
No, okay.
This is strictly just a...
Just a positive.
It's a positive, that's it. And I'm sorry about that. And I didn't actually close it, so right now I will say then, a move that we close the hearing.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? The hearing is now closed, okay? And then, in the matter of recommendation for zone change petition 2023-02, Beechwood Smithtown LLC, request R-21 to R-6. I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
That's only for...
It's only a recommendation for the town board to adopt the SEQA positive deck.
Okay. I want to make sure.
It's actually in the first resolved. It's just recommending that the town board issue a SEQA positive declaration.
We're voting on the matter right now. Folks? Folks?
Excuse me. Excuse me, can we just take your... Sorry, we're going to continue our meeting.
The meeting will be done in a minute if you just let us finish with the vote.
Okay, all right. So this, again, for the record, it's just, we're just recommending the town board issue a SEQA positive declaration. We just want to make sure that before we go forward with anything, that we have that in our hands.
Okay, yep.
Okay, so...
Let me just state that they did file the affidavits of posting and mailing and they were in proper order.
Okay, thank you.
In proper order.
Good?
Yep.
Okay, did we adopt that motion?
We didn't adopt that.
We didn't? Okay, then. Okay, then, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Barbara?
Excuse me?
Honestly, folks, I can't hear. Excuse me.
Can everybody please leave the room, take a conversation?
We ask you to please be quiet. The meeting's still on. We're voting. And we can't, we can't hear what's going on, so...
If you want to stay, you can stay and listen if you like.
They can stay, but just please be quiet.
But we can't have a conversation going. We appreciate that. Thank you for your courtesy. Appreciate that.
This side of the room, thank you. That side of the room, you're good, too.
Okay, thank you. I will repeat that. In the matter of recommendation for zone change petition 2023-02, Beechwood Smithtown LLC, request R-21 to R-6. I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
You want to keep going or you want to put the SEQA?
Is there a second?
I'm second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? The motion is adopted. And now I move that we adopt the minutes of the September 27th and October 18th, 2023, meetings of the planning depart, the planning board.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The motion is adopted. And now I move to adjourn this meeting.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.